Hey, everyone. Good morning. Yeah. Just one second, guys. All right, we're just gonna wait for one minute for Janine and then we can get started.
Good morning.
Hi. Okay, are we ready to get started? Well, Janine is either gonna join us virtually or in person. We're not sure, but we'll text her and find out. So we'll go ahead and get started. So this is just a work session with the Board of County Commissioners and the Department of And Tim, I will turn it over to you to kind of set the way for the meeting today and we'll go from there. Can everybody hear us okay? Yeah, great.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Roy, for being able to join us today. We're very excited. It is snowing out, but we're still bummed you're not here in person. But we know we'll meet you in person come spring or summer. So the point today, my name's Tim Bergman, I'm the Lake County Manager. We can do, we'll do a round of introductions here in a moment. Really, the Board of County Commissioners wanted to meet with you, Dr. Roy, to learn about your new department. You know, how things can be supported on the local level when it comes to other childhood education, childcare issues, a whole host of things like that. We've invited a bunch of our local stakeholders and partner organizations. And we can go through introductions and then probably turn it over to you, Dr. Roy, to learn about you and your department. And I know the Board and our Human Services staff have some questions. Then we can open it up, you know, to a more informal discussion with the rest of our partner organizations. If that works for you. Awesome, cool. We'll start with Commissioners.
All right. Good morning, Dr. Roy. My name is Sarah Mudge, I'm the Lake County Commissioner.
Good morning, Dr. Roy. I'm Kayla Marcel, I'm the Lake County Commissioner and also the President of the Bright Start Early Childcare Nonprofit Organization.
And I'm Jeff Eadley, the Third County Commissioner.
I'm Kelsey Maxey. I work for Public Health in Lake County and I'm also the Treasurer for the Board of Directors for Bright Start.
Cool, um, let's see, we'll do online. Janine, do you wanna, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, Dr. Roy. I am Janine McGee and I'm the Director of Human Services for Lake County.
Continue with County Staff Nancy.
Hi, my name is Nancy Contreras and I'm the Data and Case Manager for Lake County Wraparound.
Sonia.
Hi, Dr. Roy, I'm Sonia Luna and I'm with the Child CCAP for Lake County.
Cool. This will start to stop. Kristin.
All right, guys, I have a really bad cough. So I'm Kristin Sparkman. I'm with the Rocky Mountain Early Childhood Council. Dr. Lisa Roy, we've met before, so it's good to see you.
Miriam.
Hey, my name is Miriam. I'm the Family Support Coordinator with Full Circle of Lake County.
Stephanie.
I think I'm the only Stephanie on here. I'm Stephanie Hickman, I'm the Early Childhood Workforce Manager for the Department of Early Childhood.
Cool. Stacy.
Hi, Stacy Petty, I'm the Director of the Rocky Mountain Early Childhood Council. Both Kristin and I both also live in Leadville and it's good to see you all, including all of our state partners.
Yeah. Sarah Luna.
Hi, I'm Sarah Luna, Executive Director for Bright Start Learning Center.
Tim.
Hi, I'm Tim DeRocher. I am the Legislative and Policy Manager for Department of Early Childhood.
Michelle.
Hello, I'm Michelle Macken Brown. I am the Program Services Supervisor for the CCAP team at the Department of Early Childhood.
Jesse.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jesse Byrne. I'm from the Department of Early Childhood. I'm the Division Director for Early Learning Access and Quality. Glad to be with you here this morning.
Great, thank you. Paula.
Good morning, my name is Paula Luhon. I'm the CCAP Program Integrity Manager.
Angela.
Hi, everybody, I'm Angela Benzekri. I'm the Early Childhood Recruitment and Retention Manager at the Department.
Patrick.
Hi, Patrick Poyandi here and I am the Interim Policy Director for the Department of Early Childhood here. Grace Echol will be back at the start of January, so that is the name you should look for as well.
It's like the most fun last name I've heard in a long time. I love it.
And let's see, Jeanette.
Good morning, my name is Jeanette Wells Gonzalez and I am the Family Support Partner for Lake County Wraparound.
Thank you. And last, of course, but not least, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Roy.
Thank you so much. I am so bummed that I wasn't able to be with you today. I was looking forward to the beautiful drive and seeing you in person. But the fortunate thing with us being online is I came pretty deep, in a sense, with loads of staff to answer any questions that you might have that I, that I might not know offhand. And so very excited to have my team here. When I was looking at my calendar, I was like, hey, since I'm not going, I, I wanna make sure we have the experts literally in the room with us. So, so thank you all. I am going to try my best to share the screen. I always, oh, it says I'm disabled from doing that. I don't know if they sent to you the slide deck, but if you could enable me to share the screen, I'd be happy to walk through.
That should have worked. Oh, there we go.
Okay, let's see here. Always fun, isn't it? Okay, give me a second. Try that again. Okay, I'm hoping this works this time. Yay. It's been a while. I used, I used Zoom for two and a half years in Nebraska, so they have us on Google Meets and so I just had to get re-acclimated. So thank you again for having me today. I am excited to just share updates with you, find out more about Lake County and again, work with you in partnership and answer any of your questions. So I am hoping that my They said I haven't used Zoom in a while, yay, something worked. So the vision of our department is the same actually as the Office of Early Childhood. Through stakeholder engagement, we really felt like this vision still applied to the department as a whole. And so we believe that all children, families and early childhood professionals are valued, healthy and thriving. The mission, we felt that the Office of the Department of Early Childhood had also done a great job. So we tweaked it a bit, but as you see, we want to make sure that as a department, we deliver an inclusive community-based, data-driven, high-quality, equitable, early childhood system that supports care, education and wellbeing for all of Colorado's young children, their caregivers and early childhood professionals in all settings. We have decided upon values after working with our team of early childhood professionals at the statewide level and will continue to get input on these. But equity is one of those that we feel is important. And we want to make sure that it leads to better outcomes for young children. We're committed to providing equitable, inclusive services to meet the diverse needs of young children and caregivers. And we're doing that by engaging families, communities and decision-making and supporting a diverse workforce internally and externally, strengthening policies and procedures through an equity lens and removing barriers to access. And most of all, using data for addressing disparities. That's an important piece of our work. The family and community focused speaks for itself, but it's at the forefront of our work. We want to earn the trust of everyone that we work with you as partners, including the families. We want to prioritize opportunities to collaborate and hear the voices regarding the needs. We want clear and consistent communication. We want to commit to transparency and accountability in our processes and outcomes. And, you know, again, we do believe that if families have access, they're more likely to thrive. So we, again, want to make sure that we listen to the voices of community and adapt to the needs as necessary. Excellence, we do want excellence in government. You pay taxes, you want, and you're, many of you are in government yourselves, so you know the importance of this goal. And so we hope, we're holding ourselves accountable as well for high-quality service delivery. We want to support whole child, whole family, and that is a value that, from my understanding, when I, while I was in Nebraska temporarily, the state of Colorado really wanted to commit to that whole child, whole family lens. And we still want, as I said earlier, to make, meet the unique diverse needs of communities and implement a comprehensive, coordinated service delivery and collaboration with our partners and a skilled early childhood workforce. The next two, innovation, government is not always known for innovation, but I think Colorado and the counties have a great reputation with being innovative with the resources that we have. So we want to continue to leverage our strength and partnerships and take courageous steps to evaluate our current beliefs and practices, incubate and pilot innovative ideas, enjoy change. We want to ground our work in research-based evidence, outcomes-based practices and shared measures and continuous quality improvement. And the last value that we have committed to is to be really asset-based. We want to make sure that families and children experience optimal growth and that our focus should be on leveraging the strength and resources and perspectives of every individual, every community, every organization that we work with internally and externally. And our commitment is to ensure positive outcomes and real social change for young children, families and communities. And we realize that that will be through database decision-making and bringing to the forefront the lived experience and skills and knowledge of families and caregivers. We have come up with seven goals that I'll share with you and again, would love your input as we are finalizing these. But we want to ensure that all families have equitable and easy access to high-quality, affordable, early childhood services to meet the unique developmental needs of children in mixed delivery settings, including home and communities, childcare and preschools and parental and child health settings. We want to create policies and partnerships and funding streams to recruit, retain, well compensate and support a diverse and qualified early childhood workforce to provide care and education to all children and their families. We want to partner with families and organizations to meaningfully and equitably engage, support and empower families and communities in promoting children's overall development, learning and wellbeing and develop and enhance diverse partnerships with stakeholders. And the shortlist is there to strengthen a statewide, comprehensive, well-coordinated, sustainable, early childhood system that meets the evolving needs of all children, families and communities. Number five, we want to leverage and align available federal, state and local, public and private funding streams to maximize impact and develop a sustainable funding strategy to maintain and strengthen our early childhood programs and services. We want to develop and continuously improve on a statewide integrated data system and research agenda to access timely and actionable data, incorporate the voices of family and communities to inform planning and policy development, enhance informed decision-making and improve service delivery. And then the last goal is to strengthen our internal operations, prioritize our own employee diversity and wellbeing so that we can effectively and efficiently serve families, children and community. Wanted to share with you our organizational structure. This has changed a little, literally this week, so my staff doesn't even know this, so guys, keep it to yourselves. But we have three offices, the Offices of Administrative Solutions. I wanted to point out that Colorado has not had a new department in 30 years. A lot has changed in 30 years. Think about what you were doing 30 years ago. So around computers, I think we were doing Control 8 or F7 or, you know, all of those kinds of things back in the day. Our systems were much more rudimentary. But imagine trying to set up a new shop completely from scratch. So we're in the midst of doing that and Colleen Lynn is leading that office. And we have People Operations, which is led by Naomi Gonzalez and that includes HR functions, our finance, budgeting procurement, which is Jeannie Stefanic, and then Strategy, Policy, Communications and Partnerships. Karen Elwell will be coming on board to support that work starting December 12th. Our BITS, which is the Office of Business Innovation, Technology and Security Management, is managed by Colleen Lynn and she is currently hiring for her lead positions. Those will actually be units and not divisions, but we have them here for an understanding of what all falls under her shop. And then many of you know Mary Alice Cohen, who's my Deputy Director. She's over the Office of Program Delivery. And many of the folks who report to her are here today and I thank them for that. The one change that people might not be aware of, including on my team, is that the Governor has asked me to prioritize the rollout of UPK. So the UPK Director, Donna Dean, who we recently acquired from Jefferson County School District, will be reporting directly to me. So that gives you a bit of the organizational structure. We're excited that the Early Childhood Workforce is a newer division and we have made that higher, but I don't know if we've announced that yet, Jesse.
I'm gonna find the mute button. No, we have not made that announcement yet.
Okay, so we'll wait on that, that will be coming out shortly. So again, we're very excited about the potential to expand that work. We know how critically it is important for infant toddler care, for our pre-K initiative and even out-of-school time to ensure that we have a workforce that's prepared and ready to serve kids. I think you might know that one of the unique things about my, or I should say roles about my position is that I get to promulgate rules. And we have had several rules promulgated, some being emergency rules that we had to do because of our federal commitments and others that we had to do for the rollout of the Universal Preschool Program. So for those of you who work on CCAP, you know that we have to ensure that our guidelines and state median income updates are in permanent rule. So we had an emergency rule for that on September 29th and the permanent rule on November 21st. Our eligibility rules that outline income levels, which we have at 270% of poverty and the other qualifying factors were made at an emergency rule on September 29th and the permanent rule on November 21st for that. I will, I want to take a little bit of time to explain why it says three and under when we're talking about UPK. We are honoring some of the commitments that Colorado Preschool Program had around three-year-olds and then two counties had zero to three as a waiver. We're not able to expand upon the three-year-old program, but we are honoring a hold harmless. And the hold harmless means two different things for our department. One is that any of the CCAP funding that is spent for this year for three and under will be honored this next year, whether they have full, fully enrolled or not. And then from there on, it will be at the rate that we have set. But the other hold harmless is that the money that is traditionally gone to districts so that they can collaborate with center-based and home-based providers, or if they have served children solely as a district, that those dollars will continue to go to them. I have no purview over the Department of Ed, as you know, or what school districts do. But what we are doing is encouraging those districts who have traditionally partnered with community-based providers to continue to do so for the three and under funding. But again, we don't have control over that. And that's something that I had to state during, during the rulemaking session, so thought I would offer that information again. As far as additional eligibility, preschool services and rate settings, we were able to share our formula and more generous hours than were originally announced. I think you might remember the first rule setting I declined and the Governor supported. We were doing 10 and 10. And as we know, preschool is not hourly, it's half-day and full-day. So we were able to get a lot closer to what pre-K actually implements on a daily basis and that we have up to 15 hours for UPK in our rule and up to 30 for those with qualifying factors. So that emergency rule was passed on November 21st and we hope to do the final rule in January. Lake County stimulus funding, I don't have to tell you about this, but you have received a total of $333,771 in stimulus funding and 251,951 has been in operations grants, 61,820 in workforce grants, 5,000 in licensing bonusing and then 15,000 in health grants. Our grant recipients are Get Outdoors Leadville. And you can see there is an operations grant for 114,176 and a workforce grant for 28,015. Bright Start Learning Center for 24,405 and a workforce grant for 5,988. The Center at Lake County Elementary School, an operations grant for 104,783. Workforce grant for 25,710 and a mental health, mental health grant for 15,000. And then Sophie Garza received an operations grant in the amount of 8,587. A workforce grant for 2,00107 and a licensing bonus grant for 5,000. The district received expanding childcare capacity and then Firefly Community Dad, supporting the family childcare workforce and piloting a mobile workforce option. Clayton Early Learning received a Circle Grant to support coaching, teaching, mental, teacher mental health and business practices through Embrace with a focus on rural counties. So Lake County has access to that and Colorado Mountain College, establishing a workplace-based learning program offering coursework in Spanish and creating a substitute pool to support workforce development. So that's another one that Lake County has access to. So that went really fast. As you can see, we are in various, what you would call, social mediums. And so Facebook, Twitter, we have our own Snapchat, LinkedIn. And so Facebook, Twitter, we have our own Snapchat, LinkedIn. Um, and obviously, what is that? What is that one called? Oh, my gosh, this is terrible, guys.
YouTube.
YouTube, thank you. We're on YouTube. It's like you recognize it, but without having it there, I'm going to have to ask them to do that for me because YouTube is not one that I use very often. So I wanted to stop there and just see if you had any questions about uh what I just presented to you again. We are building a jet plane while flying it because we're actually setting up our new department while rolling out two brand-new initiatives. You you know that we are working with LCOs uh across the state to support our uh work with rolling out UPK. We'll have a unified unified application process that I'd like to talk to you about as well. And um, we're very committed to the work that um formerly known as the Office of Early Childhood and now the Department of Early Childhood does around family support programs, including home visitation, our family resource centers, of course, early childhood uh councils, and then um our work with C cap, um workforce development quality. Um, and I guess the only other thing is just ensuring that our partnerships with the counties are strong.
Does anybody have any questions um from that preliminary information that they'd like to ask about?
Are those grants that will be awarded in twenty twenty-three? Or are they?
The the grants.
Is that?
Those grants were already awarded.
I'm just double checking. Thank you.
Jeff, do you have anything initially?
I don't have any questions.
Sarah, Tim, anybody on the Zoom have any questions immediately?
Uh Lisa, I might add to your report out some information that's hot off the presses on the workforce side. Um, we are working with our partners at the Department of Higher Education to give each um college and university across the state that has an ECE program an allocation to give scholarships on their own. And in spring and summer twenty twenty-two, they were able to award at Colorado Mountain College about sixty-two thousand dollars worth of scholarships to um eighty students in the spring and forty-two over the summer. And we'll have additional numbers for the fall as well very soon. Um, and that funding and we have additional allocations for this entire fiscal year as well as the entire fiscal year of FY twenty-four, so that will go through spring.
Thank you, Angela. I just enough, Jeanne.
Jeanne, did you want to jump in and and share any information or ask any questions or?
Yeah, I I mean, I just, I think all the additional funding is so wonderful and really helpful and we've appreciated what we've received in Lake County. Um, part of the challenges that we've had with an increase in um C cap funding and you know, some of the federal funding that came down the line is just uh provider capacity. So um, I I don't know if you know or who wants to take the lead on sort of describing our um community. And and um, and maybe there's different components of it. So there's the childcare aspect, um, the early childhood uh focus pieces of it. And then there's also um the early childhood behavioral uh and just general needs of families in Lake County. So I think there'll probably be folks who touch on that. Um, often folks are a little surprised at how we're navigating in Lake County and may not be aware of sort of our Lake County story. Um, so I just want to make sure that we leave you with that information.
That is exactly why I'm here and why we've put so much time on the calendar. So we're not leaving until I understand that context. Thank you, Jeanne.
Yeah. Sure, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, do you want to lead on that?
No, sure. Um, I can, I can just share a little bit. I've uh been in this role as a commissioner for four years. Um, and I'll start my second term in January. But during that four years, um, I've worked extensively with Bright Start, both um previous to and after the closure during the pandemic. Um, and we were finally able to open and hire staff and pay them well. Um, and we have a waitlist and Sarah is our director and she's excellent. Um, and we've got a very strong Board of Directors that um supports our staff and meets with them regularly. Um, and uh, our Board of Directors don't feel like we are forced into keeping the center open for our own childcare needs, but that we're able to provide an objective lens to childcare and maintaining that center and and providing our director with resources that she needs. Um, so I I think, um, but we do have parents on our Board of Directors. And so I will just say that I think it's really difficult to operate a childcare center, a licensed childcare center in a rural community, especially a rural community that has a high commuting population. Um, and so we asked the county for an allocation of the ARPA funding for four years, so we'll receive fifty thousand dollars for four years of the ARPA funding from the county and city. Um, they've split that seventy-thirty. And uh, without that money, we wouldn't be open. Um, and on top of that, we get an allocation from our Tana funding from Jeanne to pay for our director's salary. And without that money, we would not be able to be open. And I think, I think that that is solely the pressure point with um with uh the the previous board and the previous center and all of the struggles that they had with licensing and being able to keep and retain staff and being able to make payroll. Um, because we are bored and you can jump in out wherever you feel. Um, we've very strongly feel that we can't charge outrageous tuition rates to cover the cost of staff because if we do that, we won't have any kids enrolled to pay our staff. So it's just like kind of that crazy catch twenty-two. And Angela, yes, it is, it's purely operational, purely operational. Um, our tuition costs and revenue do not cover the cost of our staff or the rent of the facility that we're in. Um, and we're also renting a facility from the school district uh because we don't have a place here that fits licensing requirements other than that space. So we do know and understand that very soon we will have to undertake a capital campaign to find a permanent home if the center wants to survive. Um, but I feel like for the very first time, we're in a place where it's not like we're not sure if we're going to be able to stay open next month and it's only because we have that funding and that dedicated funding stream at least for four years. Um, so you can.
I was gonna say, I can jump into, and we've grown substantially since, over the year. Um, and like looking at next year, even with that funding, we're going to be dipping into our reserve about like twenty-five thousand dollars and we run an incredibly conservative budget um with a huge focus on paying our staff and providing some type of benefits so that we can retain them because that has historically been one of the biggest issues. And right now, we have a great team of qualified staff and we really want them to stay. They're doing a wonderful job. Um, so even with that funding, we know we have the money because we created a reserve account with some of that funding as well when we opened very small so that we could sustain a little bit longer. Um, but like, once we're not getting um the ARPA funding, I mean, we have to figure out something else. Otherwise, we won't be able to stay open.
Yeah, and I I don't know if that would be like asking the county to dedicate a portion of the Human Services Middle Levy to early childhood care to um uh supplement the the licensed daycare facility that we have so that we can increase capacity. Um, I don't, I don't know what that looks like quite yet. I think we've got some time to figure that out. But but without that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to be open at all. So really, like, I think the stressors from the previous experience, like, it really all comes down to money.
Bright Start's the only.
Bright Start is the only licensed childcare in Lake County. Um, and we have.
Other than Sophie, is that right?
Right, other than Sophie, yeah. Um, and.
And the center.
And the center, right. Um, and so we, we really just fill in those gaps and we do have a waitlist.
We do.
A big one.
I mean, we have a waitlist that would support a whole nother toddler room.
Yes, we do. But we don't, but we don't have the money to open an additional room. We have the space, but we don't have the money to fund the staffing to open the additional room.
So with E and E Grants will be opening again in January. And so we'd be able to apply for funding to help outfit that room. But I hear you when you say that staff, paying for the staffing is gonna be the struggle. Um, but just know we do have funding um to help get another room open. Uh, so just keep that in mind.
Thanks, Stacy. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I just also want to emphasize while the center um is also licensed, they don't, they aren't always open in the summer and um, you know, it just depends, I think, on a couple of factors. So it is not uncommon for us to have only Bright Start of um and any in um home providers in the summertime. Um, and uh, the age range, right? Bright Start, can you talk about that for just a second?
Yeah, do you, Sarah, do you want to talk about our our licensing age, the ages that we serve?
Yeah, so we are licensed for children twelve months walking up until seven years old. But that's a little limited. A lot of infant, families asking for infant care as well, which there's none in Lake County, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, the only license for infants would be with Sophie as a home provider. So she can have two under two. Um, but uh, we have not had any center-based licensed infant slots for over a decade.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think um, you know, we haven't experienced the the struggles with staffing that the previous board has experienced with Bright Start. Um, but our board, since we reopened the center a year ago, we've really made the commitment that um we're going to pay livable wages. And if we can't pay livable wages, we're not sure it's worth being open because we believe that quality childcare comes from treating your staff right from the start. Um, so we've made that commitment to our staff and we have not had turnover in the year that we've been open because we've done that. But it all comes down to like, we don't have the money to keep doing that. So, so it might be really great for four years and then we don't know what happens after that. But um, I I mean, the progress that we've been able to make with that, with that money has been really, really helpful.
Yes.
I think the other thing to emphasize is just the workforce issue, which you may or not may or not be aware of. Um, but something unique to Lake County is that we have sixty, depending on season, sixty to seventy percent of our um population commutes out of county for work predominantly into the resort regions. Um, so we're talking Red Creek Vale, Eagle, you know, Beaver Creek um for work. And and I always like to emphasize those are over two very intense mountain passes. So if you all felt it was hard to get here today imagine what that looks like throughout the winter when you go and your kids are back in Leadville. Um, and um, it it significantly impacts our um families as a whole in multiple different ways. Uh, I know our our child welfare staff is also joined now too. And one of the things they emphasize is that we end up with a lot of siblings providing care um in Lake County.
Yeah, yeah, I um, I think that's a huge factor as well. Um, you know, and then it's hard for us to also find staff that has the the meets the minimum qualifications to work in a childcare center. So we're trying to overcome that hurdle with our childcare coalition um to get people experience so that if we do have turnover, we have a dedicated pipeline of somebody that can like step in from a substitute role and be like, hey, we're here, we're good, we're, we're ready to work. We do have um substitutes though that we do retain for Bright Start. So we, we have at least filled that gap as well, so we don't have to like close a room if staff is out sick. We have people that can fill in um dedicated substitutes. So Sarah's done a great job of, um, you know, we've set the the direction of this is what we need and Sarah's done a great job of working to get that staff in place.
Well, the other, the other thing I think, like to go along with Jeanne's um statistic, I think it's at least seventy percent all year round, if not more on the commuting. But the school district population is, so is it seventy, sixty-eight percent Latinx? And seventy-eight percent um free and reduced lunch? So you can compare those two um, or or just, you know, come up with that kind of storyline of the the amount of underserved, the underserved population in our community who have children and have families and in all likelihood are also making that commute.
Yeah, definitely. And I, I think like if you focus on like an economic development lens, you know, there's, there's several pillars in economic development that help a community thrive. And that's like, you know, a good workforce, a diverse economy, transportation, childcare, school district, healthcare. Um, those are all like pillars that you look at when you, when you look at economic development. And if you don't have childcare in a community, you don't have the ability for families to create community within your community. So um, it's important, it's also important in that, in that aspect, I think, um, that the outcomes are important.
Well, this is um very hopeful for context for me. Um, I mean, I've been, you know, camping in Leadville and, you know, the outward bound experience was, which was actually horrifying for me. Coming from New York City, you know, decades and decades ago. So I've been in Colorado for forty-one years, but I I will never forget that experience. But Leadville itself is lovely and uh, but it's, you you don't know what's behind the curtain, right? You need to understand what families are going through. And so understanding the population of kids that you're working with and the challenges of families, I think, is important. Uh, it gives me a lot to think through and, you know, talking with the governor, he's very committed to figuring out solutions for rural communities and um, because he's for all Colorado, as you know. Uh, one of the things that I would, I I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Is that okayed it for me to do at this point?
Yeah.
I wanted to know uh if you know how many children under five you have, number one. Number two, I wanted to know more about your waitlist and how many home-based providers that you might be aware of. And then I wanted, and then, so I'm sorry, I'm throwing these all out. The other question I have is around um you know, how many retired teachers you might have in your community uh from the school district system? And then I I think I'll stop there for right now, which trying to get the numbers thing going right now.
Stacy, I think you might have the most accurate data from kids first.
Um, from the, based on kids count data, and then if you look at the state demography office, like it varies a little bit, but usually we are right around five hundred children, um, five and under. And um, and then, so we have the two centers and one licensed home. We also have Get Outdoors Leadville, which is predominantly a summer program. And while they're licensed to um watch kids as young as four, I believe, or five, um, it's really based in the summer. It's more school-age kids in the summertime. Um, we know that we have um a handful of FFN providers. Some we only know of because people in this room have used them. Uh, but they often want to fly under the radar and kind of, you know, because we've tried many times to reach out and offer training and support. And do you want to become licensed and all those things? But we rarely get uptake on that. Um, those are the things of the list of questions that that came to me. Are there other things? Uh, Kayla, you think I know about?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think you've covered everything that you would have access to data for. I think um retired teachers, I'm not entirely sure what that, what that looks like because we have, at least from my perspective, a pretty young demographic of teachers in our school district. And um, they have sometime been been saddled with high turnover. Um, so I don't, I don't know that that would be an an avenue for us. Sarah, do you want to talk about? Sarah, do you want to talk about our current enrollment and the, the amount of kids on our waitlist?
Yeah, so we currently have twenty-four children enrolled. One of them is five, the fourteen are under. Twenty-three, if I want to do my math right, twenty-three are under five, but those nine are toddlers. Our waitlist for a toddler room is eight children. And I'm waiting to support other families to submit their paperwork so that will bump us up to like ten. And we have three preschool waitlist children.
Also, just speaking to total license, license capacity amongst the licensed facilities. We're just under two hundred children total. So, but that also includes, for instance, a room at the center that is currently empty because they can't find staff. So we were able to open two new rooms at the center with the any grant funding. But they were only able to find staff for one of the two and continue to struggle with that. So I know staffing is an issue across the state, turnover as well, and we see those things here too.
Yeah, I think, I think long-term for us, or at least in the short term, you know, when we were opening and trying to, to get staffed up. We definitely didn't want to be in a position where we were in competition with the center. Because it doesn't achieve the end goal of providing quality childcare in our community. So we didn't want to like poach their staff. So we really wanted to make sure that we weren't going down that road to create, you know, unnecessary competition. But, but that, that is a, a struggle that we find too is finding people that meet the qualifications to be in the classroom. And I think ideally long-term, Bright Start would really want to work towards complementing the school district's program at the center. So, you know, have similar, similar curriculums, similar activities, those kinds of things. And, and then that way, when a room opens up at, at preschool, we can shuttle parents to the center. And we can bring more children into our program. So we would like to be kind of a step into the center or the school district and work really closely with that relationship long-term.
Another tidbit for you, Dr. Roy. I mean, my own personal experience, I grew up going to a, going through a four-day school week, but we also have a four-day school week here. So that leaves an entire day where just a challenge if you have a, a kid that you can't leave at home. Or, or drop off at the ski area or areas like that. But that's where goal, Get Outdoor Leadville, sometimes our recreation programming, things like that can help with those things. But it's not full day. It's like a couple hours of programming that's available.
And I can chime in as a parent too, put that hat on for a second. I have a preschool-aged child who goes to Bright Start instead of the center because we have two full-time working parents. And not having childcare on Fridays or knowing that we won't have a summer of childcare doesn't really support our, our jobs. It's just not sustainable. So like knowing that one day a week in those like six to eight weeks over the summer, it, it just doesn't work. Since there's not the summer programming for the younger kids. So that's a struggle as well. And previously, I also commuted to Summit County with both of my kids in the car over the past to take them to childcare in Summit County. So like having Bright Start here is a game changer and is the reason that our family can have two working parents working in Lake County. It's like, that's another perspective of how like valuable this care is and how it's changed like our life specifically.
Um, I've had a lot of conversation with Senator Bennett's office around childcare for a while. And there, there was some money allocated to the town of Silverthorne, I think, for a childcare center through congressional direct spending earmarked a year ago. And they recommended that we maybe reach out to Summit County to see if there was a way for us to help supplement a, a childcare spot in Silverthorne for families that do commute, that we might not be able to have capacity for them here. So they recommended that to us and I haven't reached out to them yet on that recommendation. But I think will in the future, once that center is built. But the, the earmark funding hasn't come down the pike yet.
To that point, also, we, some of our CCAP providers are out of county. So they are in Summit County. And so if folks need a CCAP slot, that's often where they're having to go. And, and, or if they need an infant slot, they're trekking over Battle Mountain with an infant to get to work.
Which is horrible.
No guardrails. Yeah, it's a, so we're just, we're just kind of in this place where, like, I feel like we could increase capacity because we've got enough people interested in the pipeline. We just don't have the money to increase capacity to provide that quality care. And I think, you know, there was, there was always a lot of talk about, you know, change the regulations, make it easier for people to work in child, early childhood education. And I think that that's kind of a naive assumption because it does work if you have money to, to meet the licensing requirements. And at the end of the day, you do provide child quality care, meeting those licensing requirements. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that that is the solution, but I think if there was money available to help people meet those requirements, it would, it would make a lot of difference.
Well, thank you for answering my questions. And I definitely want some of the staff to chime in with ways that we might be able to partner. I think a couple of things came to mind. Especially because so many folks, like you said, commute to other counties. And having a multi-county solution, I think, makes sense to say, we, we need the employees in Lake County. And what resources are the resorts willing to, to do to support the workforce? The governor is very committed to, to workforce solutions as well. And so we do have some grants that we are doing through Epic and you're familiar with Epic?
I'm not.
Yeah. So Nicole Reel runs Epic. And so, you know, I would advise just connecting with her and letting her know that we talked and that you really are trying to figure out some workforce solutions to support various counties around the state, but that, that you actually are supplying the workforce. And so there might be, when you were talking about a capital campaign, there are dollars to help support that through our partnership with Epic. Thank you, Stacy. I think the other thing that I have some interesting thoughts about is that just with the UPK dollars that are coming out next year and your partnership with the school district. So they are running a center. They would have the ability with the rate that we have for serving minimum of up to fifteen hours. And CPP was two to sixteen, they can serve two to twenty now. So that gives more capacity for that. And again, with your ability to serve up to thirty hours of pre-K. Utilize, you know, again, I don't know what the need is in your community for pre-K, but that's going to be another option as well. I applaud you paying your staff a livable wage. And we'll do everything we can to continue to support that and be creative to support that beyond the stimulus dollars. Your community is small enough that we can try to figure it out. Others, other larger counties and cities, that would be harder, right? To say, yikes, we, we don't know how we're going to be able to sustain those efforts. But this, this we can work with, like I said, other counties, the governor and some of the creative programs that we have going on in the state to make that happen. But I'm grateful that you do have the current stimulus dollars to make that happen. Heather's coming in.
Dr. Roy, are going back to some of the workforce challenges. I think Stephanie Hickman and/or maybe Angela had some additional questions to help kind of dig into that a little bit more.
Thanks, Jessie. Yeah, I was just curious if you guys have gotten any feedback from the workforce? Those that have turned over or if you've gotten any survey results on why they're leaving, why they're not coming? Is it, you know, I think that will help us then look at what we're offering and be able to partner with you all? Because it does vary, right? You're, Lake County is so unique. Rural counties vary, the reasons vary and are different from the urban areas.
Yeah, definitely. I think, I think sometimes people leave because of resource scarcity. So like not having childcare might be a reason that you pursue a job in, in Summit or Eagle County. Wages might be another one. The cost of living, I don't know if you have.
Well, maybe, I think somebody hasn't come up by like the cost of housing just went nuts here. So in the last like three, and it's gone nuts everywhere, but it like kind of literally doubled or more in the last three years. So it used to be like, okay, I'll make, you know, a fraction of what I can make on the Front Range or in the I-70 corridor. But that's okay because I can buy a house for two hundred thousand. And now that house is like five hundred thousand and it just doesn't add up anymore at all for people who didn't already have secure housing. And we see that in the county, in the hospital, the school district, the city, you know, every large employer, small employer. You know, for people who didn't already have secure housing, the math just doesn't add up.
Yeah.
And there isn't enough available, even if you could afford that. There's just not enough inventory. And I would, I would be willing to say it even tripled in the last three or four years, the cost of housing. It's, it's really insane. And I, I have to commend the Bright Start Board for what they've done to work to raise pay there. Because there was a time, not long ago, I would say, five years ago, where the director was making fourteen dollars an hour. And they just really didn't have the funding. Even with all the funding that we were able to bring in through the council, the support coaching, they really needed those general operational dollars. So that they didn't have to charge families a hundred dollars a day, which they can't afford.
I have to say, they also got Sarah Luna. She was commuting over into the Eagle County area to go to work at another childcare. And then the other, I want to say the other teachers were, the teachers that you have now were also center employees years ago. And so I think the cost or the, the, the pay that you guys have been able to offer your employees now is, is really showing, you know, what you guys needed to happen. So kudos.
Kayla, are you guys able to offer health insurance and things like that at Bright Start now? Because that might be another thing that sometimes has people change jobs.
Yeah, so Kelsey's been working on, on some health benefits for us.
Yeah, we, in twenty twenty-three, we're offering an employer-supported ICRRA for our staff. So that's been a huge project and it's really exciting that it is like happening now. So, and that cost is built into our twenty twenty-three budget and kind of, you know, we've thought all of that through. But I know we have at least one employee who's going to enroll in it, which I know that seems really small, but it's a really huge thing for us.
Yeah, definitely. And I think just having the, the program attached to our benefit plan that we can roll out is, is incredible too, because we also have to compete with the center that you don't get six weeks off in the summertime. You get to work with kids all year long, right? And, and so I'm, I'm not saying that to be bad, but I think sometimes when you're in a preschool setting, you're really excited for six weeks off. And so, and so we have to shop that too, you know? And we've been very fortunate, very fortunate that Sarah's done such a good job with the staff to make that work environment tip-top.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it sounds, I, I just want to piggyback off of what Kristen said. Congratulations and kudos to you guys for recognizing that wages were critical to retain your staff. I also heard earlier that finding qualified providers has been a challenge. And so I think, you know, all things that I'm wondering about that might be of interest. One is a peer mentor training program that we're actually just piloting right now, but our next cohort will be coming in, I think, January or February. And that, that might be of interest because, you know, it's also a teacher leadership opportunity, right? So Sarah, that, that I, I'm probably speaking more directly to you about that. But having an opportunity to take the staff who have stayed, who are qualified, who are exemplary and helping build that pipeline with maybe the substitutes. Or also, this is another question I had. I'm not sure what the, what the high school program looks like up there. But this is something that has been of interest to me and, and learning more about what high schools are doing around child development or preparation. As just one more feeder into the field. An option in Lake County.
Yeah, sorry. Lake County Build a Generation did start a early childhood mentorship program. We do have two mentees with us. And since we share the building in the hallway with Cloud City High School, which is a, I think it's like a
Yeah, it's a, it's an alternative high school that offers us opportunities. Sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, so we, last year, we had a student who was interested in early childhood, do some hours. And this year, we have another student coming in once in a while, like a couple hours a week. And they just hang around, see what their routine and expectations are.
And there has been work done with Lake County High School on dual enrollment. Sorts of opportunities through Colorado Mountain College as well.
And that's actually perfect timing because Brooke just joined from Lake County Builder Generation, who is the, the childcare coalition leader. Brooke, we were just talking about capacity building for, for licensed childcare givers. But if you want to introduce yourself to everyone, please go ahead.
Hi, sorry for being late, everybody. I had kind of an emergency situation, but I'm Brooke. I'm Lake County Builder Generation's new childcare coalition coordinator. Happy to be here. Nice to meet everybody, some of you. Lovely to see you, lovely to see you. And yeah, whatever questions I can answer about what the coalition's been focusing on, I'm happy to do so.
And so you could just give us an overview? That would be great. And how many kids you play, what are your goals?
Sure. So it's a newer coalition. It started in twenty twenty out of a health and happiness survey through the community that identified different factors that were affecting people's health. And that number one of them was childcare. So originally came up with the idea to obviously build a coalition around that. And for the past couple of years, we have been heavily focused on staff retention and family, friends and neighbors networking. So they, we had developed a mentor program for staff retention in which we have currently wrapping up right now our first session. And that we have matched five student interns with five mentor teachers through three of our licensed centers. So that's the center, Bright Start, and then we have an at-home licensed center as well. That's been really great and successful. It sounds like the mentors are really enjoying being in their role and having time to kind of share their experiences and wisdom with the younger generation of people who are interested in becoming early childhood educators. And we have three of those five participants who are very interested in taking classes and, and following, following the pipeline to become childhood educators, which is exciting. And then for our family, friends and neighbors networking, we conducted a we conducted a, um, Community Connector Project in which we had, um, three, um, individuals who were, had strong social ties and also experienced either with being, um, a parent or provider or, um, being in childcare before. And they, um, helped us conduct interviews with at-home providers and families of children who had, or people who had children ages zero to five, and gathered some information around what they were experiencing, what challenges they were seeing, what interests they had, if any, as far as building like a social network, um, getting licensed. And, um, out of that came, um, of the Community Connectors, excuse me, and myself and my coworkers addressed, uh, an action plan of what we should take as far as steps moving forward in order to how best support those family, friends and neighbors, um, providers. So right now, we're in the process of identifying what makes the most sense and what's actionable out of that action plan. Um, some of the things that we're seeing the most of is that people there, about half of the providers were interested in becoming licensed, but felt as if they didn't have the resources or information, um, to become licensed or the support. So that's good to know, because it's out there and we just want to make sure that they know who to go to. Um, the second thing was just, um, a, a better understanding of, uh, finances and funding in which they should be asking as far as payment from families, um, as well as just kind of feeling a little bit of social isolation. So thinking of ways that we can have, um, organic connection between them, as it can be a very isolating profession. And then from families, we were hearing a lot of, um, I think the most dominant feedback was that they prov- they preferred the family, friends and neighbors providers. Um, it was something that, um, they preferred over licensed centers for a number of different reasons, whether that be, um, trust. They felt as if it was like a personal connection that they had with at-home providers, or there was a similar language and culture that they were sharing with their at-home providers, um, as well as flexibility, um, with times of like drop off and pickup. Um, so there were a number of different reasons why a lot of the families that they had, um, conducted interviews with were saying that they actually very much enjoyed the providers and the cost was something that they felt is, um, was another benefit to FFM care. So that's where we're at. And, um, we right now currently are, um, also very much in the stage of trying to build up our coalition and engagement and, um, getting to know more families and at-home providers and staff members or whomever that is interested in, um, the early childhood field and, um, get as much feedback and, um, and experience as we can, so that it will really guide our work. That was very long-winded.
That was awesome, Brooke. No, thank you. I mean, I think again, families pick FFM. Like you were, guys were talking about with Bright Start, families that work need longer hours and then families that have to go over the pass and maybe the child has to spend the night. And FFM provider makes more sense. They're not going to be, um, necessarily get in, in trouble in a sense in the same ways that they could with a licensed provider, because they're not there to pick up their child. So I think having all of these types of options available is important. Um, and how to support them is, you know, what we're here to do. And Brooke, it's just so exciting. I hope that you can share that data with our team so that we can come, you know, come up with some other, uh, types of partnerships, um, for, for Lake County. Um, I think the only other thing that, um, you said a lot, but that social isolation piece was interesting too. And I don't know how many of your FFM providers have access to the internet so that we can have, you know, sessions and, and cohorts of, uh, type programs where they can get information or ask questions. Um, so that's another, you probably have thought about that already, Brooke, but just thinking about how all of the initiatives that the governor has, since priorities broadband is one of them, and getting that around the state. Um, for us, it is supporting early childhood professionals, no matter what the setting, obviously. And we do have money and, um, incentives, and I'm sure you're aware of that for those FFM providers who are interested in becoming licensed. Did any of the other team members from the Department of Education have anything to add after hearing Brooke talk?
I have a few thoughts that have been coming to mind as this conversation has continued. Um, and I did a little sleuthing while everyone was talking to just check, um, what the quality levels for the current license programs were. Um, just to continue like formulating some thoughts on how we might be able to best kind of stack some of our opportunities from within the department. Um, so a thought that came to mind is that we do currently have, um, a waiver within licensing to allow for someone to provisionally act as a lead teacher while they're completing an apprenticeship or a CDA credential. Um, technically, that is currently offered to programs that are level three through five. So one of your centers would currently qualify for that. Um, the other, it looks, one of them is level four, the Bright Start is level two. Um, but I'm thinking, Stacy, I know you have some experience applying for a hardship waiver through ECLC to maybe see if we can extend that waiver to a level two program, given, um, the intensity and the need to open that additional classroom. And it sounds like you do have some experienced teachers that would meet the criteria for that, um, mentor within a program so that you could host an apprentice. So I'm just brainstorming some options here that that might be faster than us going through licensing to do that, but maybe go to the next ECLC meeting and see if that would be a, a topic of interest for you all. Um, since we have that model already, it'd be very quick to, you know, do a copy and paste and just change level three through five to level two and have, you know, if you have some, um, folks that you might be able to then recruit, knowing that there are scholarships for all of the professional development that the apprentice have. And then we also have funding for stipends for the apprentice, stipends for a mentor teacher and stipends for the program to pay, um, for substitutes or other costs associated with hosting an apprentice. And those apprentices could be full-time staff that count in ratio, like I said, with that lead teacher qualification. And that provisional status is usually twelve months to two years, depending on kind of the PD and credential that they're choosing. So I think that could be an option there, whether it's a CDA or, um, some other form of higher education that they would like to, um, pursue. So I think there's some flexibility in that apprenticeship model that we have. And we can, um, certainly, you know, work through Red Rocks to obtain one of those apprenticeship scholarships. Um, and then my second thought there, sorry, I'm gonna just keep going while my brain is going, um, was that we can maybe put together a call with Barbara Jackman, if you haven't already, given that we have, you know, eighty-some students that are currently receiving scholarship funding through, um, kind of that blanket, um, block grant and see if any of those students aren't currently employed and see, you know, if they're already opting into an ECE degree program. See if maybe they'd be interested in, um, employment in Leadville. So those are some of my media ideas. And Stacy, I see you're off yet, so maybe leave some comments.
Yeah, and I've definitely spoken with Julia at Red Rocks Community College about extending the apprenticeship program here, something definitely worth revisiting with her, because those initial conversations, we really didn't have anybody wanting to jump on the apprenticeship, uh, train at that moment, but that could be possible. When we had our provisional, um, ECT waiver, it definitely also was level three through five. Um, but I'm certainly more than happy to, uh, talk with ECLC folks about seeing if there would be a way to, uh, get a waiver. I know at the center, which is the level four program you mentioned, there are also Head Start. So I've been working with Heather Craiglow, um, about looking at, and she used, Heather used to work at the center in Leadville, if you didn't know that. Um, so, um, and I've been talking with her about looking at waivers they could potentially get since they have to meet those higher Head Start qualifications. But looking at some waivers for staff to try and get that last room open as well, because I know they have a waitlist of enough students as well to fill that classroom, if we could get it open. Um, but yes, happy, happy to partner.
Awesome. And I know Head Start is amenable to like CDA trainees acting in classrooms. The, the program that I came from, um, was in another state, but we did frequently have folks that were still completing their CDA, um, teaching in classrooms. So hopefully, yeah, that, that's something that we could get the paperwork for here in Colorado. Um, and then an additional thought, um, was that we do have that SBDC partnership across the state, and those are virtual trainings. So, um, Brooke, for some of those providers that are interested in learning more about licensing, interested in learning more about funding streams and what a business model could look like, they have no requirement to be licensed or to have a plan to become licensed. But it's a really educational set of training. It can be between twelve and eighteen hours of training, depending on which, um, Small Business Development Center they sign up with. But they have some really dedicated information to like, what does it look like when you take C cap? What does it look like, um, when you're just private pay? How do I set up my budget? Um, so they'd have some really, you know, in-depth information on that front. And then we do have about, um, a one-hour training within that on what does it mean to become licensed? So we've kind of stacked that within that existing training. So that might be something that, again, for folks that maybe want to get their feet wet and think about what that model could look like, that might open a door, um, again, without any commitment to licensing. Um, but given that we have emerging and expanding grants coming up, as Stacy mentioned earlier, that's, that is open to family childcare providers. Um, if they have to do any kind of retrofitting to their home or apartment, they can apply for those grants on the capital side. And then between now and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we have that five thousand dollar licensing incentive bonus. So they could possibly stack those grants as an opportunity to kind of fund some of the work that it might take to, to achieve that license.
And Kristen put information in, uh, in the chat initially, kind of, uh, letting Kayla know about, um, the scoop. We have a weekly email blast that goes out to over two hundred people in our four county region, including all providers and partners that have signed up. And we send out information weekly, highlighting different funding opportunities, sharing important updates from the state, as well as, uh, we are the LCO for Lake, Pick, King Garfield and Western Eagle. Thank you, Dr. Roy. Um, and so we're working to get, we get that information out often. So, um, it, it would be a good oppor- anybody can join the scoop, so please, um, consider that. It's in English and Spanish, um, for anyone who, uh, wants to receive that.
I signed up.
Another point, just to think about, as you talk about all these training opportunities or supports for folks who want to get licensed, is whether that is in English or Spanish, you know, i- if, how accessible. We have actually found that to be a bit of a challenge in getting folks certified too, that there are some significant language barriers there.
Uh, when the, when the governor came and visited us, and when did he come, June?
Over the summer, yeah.
Over the summer?
Yeah.
We, we did ask about that, about having materials for licensing, um, be bilingual. It would be really helpful, especially since seventy percent, like the majority of our population is Hispanic population. And it would be really helpful if we could accommodate with that. And, um, it would help us, um, be better at being a bilingual program, which was the goal that we set out when we reopened.
So are, you might, you probably can't see this, but our SBDC trainings are in Spanish as are our CDA courses. Um, that was in the chat. Um, and we are, we actually are going to the Joint Budget Committee to make sure that everything is in Spanish and English. So more to come.
Cool. Great.
Um, I wanted to follow up on a comment, Dr. Roy, that you made about sort of the regional nature, really, of like all these workforce issues, whether it's, you know, childcare or like education or, you know, housing. And I mean, that's, that's a point that's come up like again and again in like our housing affordability discussions. And when I was on the school board, it came up and I, I, I guess, um, starting that conversation with other jurisdictions and sort of the resort community or large employers has been challenging and inconsistent. Um, it feels like, I mean, it just feels like we're going begging. Um, and asking for a handout, and that's hard. So I know that's not your job to fix that. Um, but as you have conversations with some of those employers and jurisdictions that your staff does, you can just help me to plant that seed about, you know, looking, just like looking harder at Lake County for some partnerships or whatever. I, I, I don't know what that looks like exactly. And, you know, um, but, you know, again, and you can just sort of plant that seed with conversations you have.
There's a, yeah, my apologies. Yes, we, I mean, my, my wheels are turning. I would love for you guys to connect with Epic first, but around the state, different, uh, communities are coming together with workforce solutions. So they are literally building housing and childcare. Some are even, uh, building housing and saying, we'll give you a discount on your home if you agree to be a home-based provide, licensed home-based provider. So we have all these different models out there. Um, and it, you know, again, when we think about workforce solutions, um, it, it's, it is incumbent upon us to look at the employer who has access to the majority of the folks that live in our community. And if it's outside of our community to say, hey, we are, we are a resource to you, this is a win-win. So, um, you're right, we, we can work with Epic and other foundations and other government partners around that, um, are committed to city planning to, and county, uh, resources to understand what that nuance could be. Um, and excuse me, my granddaughter's taking a bath, and so you might hear the door opening and closing. Why is there running water? Why is there the voice of a child in the, she got, she was regurgitating last night, thanks to mix of Chick-fil-A and Burger King. I, I fed her Chick-fil-A and then mom took her to Burger King later, and it was like her little, poor little stomach. So we, we have to do better with our busy days. Uh, so going back to that, I just think that starting with the conversation with Epic, uh, they have these relationships with businesses. And that's why, and, and our governor is a businessman, he just is. So he wants to make sure that those, those public-private partnerships are in place and people understand what the benefit is for them to do this. But he comes in also with resources to the table. That's what makes the difference. Um, I think the only other thing is that, uh, and do you have land currently? I might have asked that question already for the childcare center. You said yes, right?
Well, um, not anything specific for like a capital campaign for Bright Start. Um, the county owns a lot of property.
Right.
But Bright, Bright Start currently doesn't own any property. Um, we're just leasing space in the old preschool from the school district.
So, um, going back to, that's great. Uh, I was just going to mention, the state is also looking at what land they owned around, around the state to figure out where they might be able to build childcare and hi- housing. The fact that the county's willing to do that is incredible. And so you're bringing a resource to the table as a county, if you do that, um, already. Uh, so that, that, that's the only reason I asked the question. It makes it a lot easier if you've identified land. Um, and if that la- land is zoned for both housing and childcare, so you can do both.
Yeah.
The issue of the, uh, rail yard.
How much is your rent with the school, by the way?
We pay twenty-five percent of the utilities that we utilize in our space. So in our, what, four classrooms that we have, we pay twenty-five, five, we pay twenty-five percent of the utilities in those places. Then the school district covers the seventy-five percent for us as an in-kind contribution to our center.
That's awesome.
Or between like eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Depending on the season.
Yeah.
Got it.
As a reference, this is in, uh, the old elementary school. So it's got two wings to it. So, um, they're occupying five rooms in one wing, and so that's why I think they do a percentage sort of thing.
Yeah, and Cloud City High School has another allocation, and then the school district administration on the other wing has another allocation. So, yeah, but we're all in the, on there together.
Yeah.
So, um.
When I, you know, um, Brooke and Stacy.
broken Stacy's points and Dr. Roy to help, you know, continue painting the picture for Lake County. You know, we've taken a deep dive um this year on our finances and and various revenue streams, but you know, we're, we're not an exception to other communities when it comes to affordable housing, to childcare, to workforce issues, to things like that. However, within our small community of about eight thousand, we have eight taxing districts. So from the county to CMC to the hospital.
City.
Uh, the city, water, sanitation, um, Mountain View Village. And then there's two other, three other metro or small districts, actually, special districts as well. Um, our sales tax is at two percent. Um, you know, and even, you know, quarter percent increase is about, I don't know, two hundred and fifty K, which, you know, is is decent, but you know, as you are aware, is a challenge to do a a lot with, you know, compared to the wealthy communities surrounding us. Um, and so it's just, it's um you know, wanting to do all of these things, you know, recently in the, in the past year, we created a regional housing authority. And between the city and county, they granted them taxing authority for up to a quarter, a quarter percent, I believe, sales or one percent sales tax increase or up to half a mil for property uh valuations. Um, but again, it comes, you know, it's just, it's a
Property tax increases, I know.
Uh, yeah, property tax increases is, you know, not a surprise probably to anyone, probably are a no-go even for any noble cause. Um, whether it's childcare or housing, or even maybe even a recreation center here. Um, so that's another area where we're, we're digging in and trying to see what we can do, but also, you know, trying with with our ARPA funding and this other one-time funding of what can we do to create something that is sustainable that doesn't have to come back in in several years um it to a funding source. And so it's, it, we we also, it it's just a financial challenge. And then, of course, these three get to make the hard decisions with the data I can provide them on the finances.
Well, and I think just to add to that point, Tim, like it, it really depends on the political climate and the economic climate of the county as well, you know, like the the valuation is going up thirty percent next year for your property. So your property taxes are going to go up naturally because of the revaluation of your property. And so um, and with that, like it, that value carries to all of the special districts. So so there's that piece of it. Um, you know, there's the piece of like the county balancing what the county has to provide. But I think um, a key takeaway from what you're saying, Stacy, is uh in in like all of the research that I've done in the assessment book from the assessor's office of all of the taxing entities and what they collect taxes for, it's very few and far between that do not have dedicated government funding for childcare, very few and far between, where they don't have any funding coming from a, from a government entity to su- supplement their childcare. Um, so it it's just something that we would need to to talk about internally and discuss and uh and figure out how to make that a priority, if it is a priority on my fellow board members. Um, it is for me. Um, but but I think it it's just one of those philosophical questions that we would have to see where that fits into into the county's coffers right now.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, the issue is it's going to take everyone's effort. And so I appreciate you thinking about what can the county do? We uh, Angela, you pu- put employer-based childcare uh as one solution. But again, your folks are going to different employers, but it doesn't mean that they can't come together to support their employees where they live. Um, and that's a place-based, public-private partnership. The governor uh and our department in connection with Epic is another partnership that could work on solutions. Um, again, there are foundations, um, Tony Lewis, who's with the Donald K Foundation, uh, is trying to think about these housing childcare solutions. So you might be considerably county and maybe the railroad one is one that they're looking at. I mean, I have no, I I'm not familiar with that particular project that was mentioned. But um, I think again, this is an incredible opportunity. And when I made the promise that together we can resolve this, that's what it's going to take. The unfortunately, you know, we had a lot of money come through because of a pandemic that's coming, going to dry up. And so we're trying to make sure that uh the funding that we've put out, and I wasn't here when these decisions were made, but the the staff and and the community statewide came up with these great solutions of what to do with this funding. Our goal was to attract and to retain the workforce that we need. And so we're really hoping that those resources will uh continue to to support that vein of the effort. But it is going to take us working together to figure out how to ensure that we sustain it beyond uh the federal dollars. So um, this is just a start, but um, I want to make sure that we at least have one person that can connect back with you on the solutions, on um following up with Epic, uh seeing if you're a, you know, if there's any interest from Donald K and how we might be able to support that uh the health, the housing childcare solution. Um, and to also think through with you um any best practices around how counties can support um this work as well.
Yeah.
So I'm going to uh not put my staff on the spot, but uh but I have to, sorry. Um, out of you guys, who do you think would be the best um touch point for all of the solutions we talked about? So you can go talk to everyone who ha- has a solution, but that has the broader perspective of all of us.
If it's anything that's related to you, C cap or grants or workforce, I can be that central coordinator and make sure that I've got a contact here that I can work with and make sure I point people in the right direction. I'll put my email address um in the chat here. Yeah, so that.
Great. I was hoping you'd volunteer, Jesse, so.
And I do, um, and that's great. Jesse, actually, if you don't mind, a quick segue, because I did have some policy question um with well, one, you know, congratulations on being the newest department. That's awesome. Um, and we're glad that, you know, the governor and the legislature realized that priority. Um, you know, for me, just another aside, you know, I came from Hickpuff, so I'm I'm familiar with, you know, county relations, how things work, and then also, you know, the challenge of coordination at the state, but then also coordination at the local level. Um, so I just, I just want you to know that uh my staff, the human services staff and I are um super stoked that um Mary Alice is staying and continuing to be there. She's been a a wonderful collaborative partner. Um, she listens, she's, anyway, she's awesome. So so thank you for that. Um, so and and she's good at aligning between Hickpuff and and DHS. Uh, but on that, so just some of the changes I know that you've made, like with with the PAC, like where is there going to be? Is there going to be a new like policy advisory committee or some kind of shift or change? Are those things still in the works? Um, and then with, I guess with C cap, uh Jesse or Dr. Roy, if you want to talk about it, um, where that lives in your new structure, because, you know, when you talked about innovation at the beginning, Dr. Roy, uh Janine and her team have been very innovative with our TANF and C cap funds. Um, so we'd like to continue to use those. Um, or or be able to be more innovative and creative with those funds, because it is, you know, I think, Janine, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we could use our C cap funding to open up more slots at Bright Start. But, you know, all of the other issues we just discussed, um, from workforce to housing to all of that. Um, so anyway, then, um, I'll stop there.
Well, uh, let's talk about governance and then C cap. So um the, you remember me talking about my rulemaking authority. So we have to re-promulgate every single rule that's currently with the Department of Human Services under the Department of Early Childhood. So we have a uh process for that. And uh, we have a fifteen-member Rules Advisory Council uh that um advises me as well as a subcommittee of human services directors. I believe that there's twelve of those um that represent all of the human services agencies around the state. And so uh our rules are written by staff with input from community, from the partners. Uh, and a lot of it has been based on input that you've given over decades and years, most recently um over the years. So they put together a rule, run it by many different stakeholders, including the two entities that I mentioned that are in the statute. And uh, the Rules Advisory Council decides on what they present to me at the hearing. With emergency rules, I make the decision the same day as the hearing, and then we have the opportunity to to make it a permanent rule later. I have to do that within a hundred and twenty days, as you know. Uh, but with um our ongoing rulemaking, um, the point would be to hear the rule and have a month think about it, get more input and make a final decision the following month. So that's, that's the way we'll be doing it. Um, Mary Alice is still on the PAC as the deputy. I think that there's been conversation because there's many different sub PACs um that there wasn't a need for an early childhood sub PAC moving forward. Um, I had committed to, you know, if we needed to do that for a year to do it, it has been six months. Um, but it seems like the with the Human Services Subcommittee and the RAC being fully uh in place now, um, that that opportunity is there to give input, public input through through those two entities. Um, I think the only other thing is that um when you talked about C cap, I, you probably don't know this about me. I was chair of the Welfare Reform Board for Denver County for five of the six years I served when we first rolled out TANF and the Childcare Block Grant. Um, and I'll believe in innovation, believe in flexibility, that's not going away. Uh, when the governor interviewed me because of my background and experience, which I will share with all of you for a couple of minutes. Um, he was excited to know that I had at least local rulemaking experience in my past. So uh that that will continue on, and I have a great group of people who um, just from looking at the stimulus funding, I could tell they were brilliant and committed to uh listening to local voice and really understood what it was going to take um to support. Uh, like I said, recruiting and retaining our workforce staff um and meeting the needs of local community. So the the circle grants were in partnership. Um, but it still was the brainchild of our staff via listening to local communities. So that will not, it's not going to come to an end during the Polis administration. I can't tell you what happens after we leave. Uh, but that's with anything, right? Uh, federal, state and local. Uh, we try to put things in place that have stickiness beyond the politics. But it still is about, you know, leadership, right?
I can um add just a few um comments to those those remarks. Um, so going back to um the question around the, how the rule is is passed and and um what that process entails. Um, particular to C cap, we are um currently in the process of trying to create a rule rewrite committee um that will provide um recommendations and and work in the area of of rule rewrites for C cap that will go to um the subcommittee in RAC that Dr. Roy um just mentioned. And I'm going to go ahead and give a plug here, given who the audience we had, we have here today, that we are looking for both community providers and counties um who might be interested in participating in that rural rewrite committee. Um, we traditionally had in the past a great combination of county representation as well as provider representation when it comes to reviewing the rule rewrites for C cap. And so if you um have anyone who's interested in that, please email me. I I just sent my email through in the chat. There's another question there around where C cap is located within uh CDEC in terms of our structure. And that actually hasn't changed um all that much um in terms of before we transitioned July first, uh the C cap program is still located within a division called Really Learning Access and Quality. Um, that would be the division that I'm the director for. Um, and then uh one of the changes, though, that we've seen is workforce was originally in that division and now has become its own division, of which I'm the interim director for, and Dr. Roy mentioned um earlier on that we're hiring a a new director for. So um, uh, you can also utilize me as a contact, as I mentioned, in those um programs or divisions. Thanks.
Awesome.
No, go ahead.
Keep going. Well, okay, so speaking of new, I know um it would have been trying to connect with um Dr. Medlock to have a meeting with the BOCC and a work session as well, just trying to like understand, I've been watching afar from, you know, like the DHS and Hickpuff perspective as the creation of the new BHA. So I worked on it before I started my job here. Um, but I guess just where where you see um Dr. Roy and your team, that those connections with behavioral health and um early childhood. And also, if you could put a good plug in for us, we're not, we're we're great to meet with.
Well, uh, I will tell you, uh, Dr. Medlock is in the same situation. I mean, she's building a jet plane and she's flying it. Um, we actually have a great team working on early childhood mental health. We have early intervention. Um, and happy to send you more information on that. I don't think we ha- we don't have a member of our team that specializes in that on this particular Zoom, but very much um committed to it and ha- have an emergency rule going forward on early intervention and our recommendations for that for December. Um, as far as Dr. Medlock goes, um, her team does different things um as far as the outreach. So it might be a matter of the person. Um, I think again, she, I don't know if you know this, but she is the primary person in charge of the response for the Colorado Springs shooting. So she's been, she was, and the governor and lieutenant governor had COVID, so she's, that's been on her plate completely. So um she is very, very responsive, but it might be just a matter of um making sure that you're connected to the right person. So I'm happy to do that. If you want to email me the who she should, her team should connect with, and we'll get that going.
Yeah, happy to. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I guess, I don't know, talking about early intervention, Janine or Nancy, I I don't know if you, and Heather as well, I don't know if you want to touch on that.
Before we go on, my my team puts things in the chat. And just so you know, the folks that are at the table aren't necessarily able to read these comments. So Angela, if you'll make your comment. And I I just would suggest, Mike, for our team, that we state anything that we're putting in chat as well. Thank you.
Sure. While we're on the topic, I just wanted to share that we have five million dollars that was allocated through Senate Bill twenty-two, two thirteen. Um, if you're not familiar with the bill, that will be designated to supporting the early intervention, early childhood mental health consultation and home visiting workforces. We have not launched that funding yet, so it's still in the planning process um on how we will kind of allocate it within professional development scholarships, possibly loan repayment programs, um licensing costs for those that are under medical boards and things of that nature. So it will be kind of a mixture on how we're supporting um that aspect of the workforce, but just wanted to share that in the pipeline.
Thank you, Angela. And we do, we have the the chat up on our screen, but yes, you are, you are more than welcome to talk about it or whatever.
Good. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, save the chat.
Um, and just while we're on behavior. And just while we're on behavioral health and early intervention, I mean, for anyone, but, you know, Janine and Nancy and Heather, just the the struggles and opportunities that we have in Lake County that that you see from the Human Services perspective and wraparound and child welfare.
Yeah, I'll just kick off really quick. I, I think we mentioned this at CCI last year when we first met you, but we have a phenomenal high fidelity wraparound program in Lake County. We're known across the state for it, and we have really done a great job in prevention work. And I think it's attributed to several factors. One is we have phenomenal staff doing it. Headed up by Gloria Perez, who who started the with House Bill 1451 11 years ago. But also, we're a small enough county that we really get to know our families. So I always have to laugh when I go to these training sessions and they're like, how do you collaborate? How does a family get from one portion of your department or one resource to another? And we, we are just so integrated. It works pretty seamlessly and very effectively with our families. We act our high fidelity wraparound part, I mean, Kinnevento funding to work with homeless families referred by the school district, so they get crisis work. I can have Nancy explain a little bit about what she does in her casework and how she does outreach. But we are excited about opportunities, both through the BHA and focusing on early childhood and quality of that early childhood experience to continue to grow that and happy to share that with folks who are interested in that work. Nancy, could you talk for just a minute about what your role is?
Um, yes, I work with, also with McKinney Vento Program. And I help the, well, the school refers list for me to call is they qualify for homeless use. It's if they're like doubled up in a home and living, well, they're not, their living situation is not stable. And so the students qualify for our program. And we provide Safeway cards, gas cards and supply like basic supply like detergent, soap. And we also provide jackets, snow pants, boots for the winter. And also, I work with financial assistance. And when I, I help the families fill out applications also. And sometimes the, for childcare, they need C cap. And and mostly, I think they tell me that they need help with slots. In childcare. That's what they always ask me if, if like the community provides that. I think like for the meetings also for wraparound. They need drop in childcare, like less minute slots, I guess.
Thank you, Nancy. That's really helpful. Heather, Muth is our welfare manager. Is, are there things you'd like to add in, in patterns or trends or needs that you've seen, Heather?
I mean, we're seeing a pattern right now of older siblings watching younger siblings being kept out of school. It's not great, but at the same time, if we can't say, hey, you can't do this, do this instead, we don't have a do this instead. I mean, with Lake County not having school on Fridays, so we're also seeing it's been this past couple of weeks, knocking on wood, but it's, we're starting to see this more and more frequently. We have 12, 13, 14 year olds watching several, including infants and toddlers, and it's just an unsafe situation. And then kids aren't going to school. So that's a trend we've been seeing recently. And not having protective services childcare for us. That's if someone has a child welfare case. So even in an early, early level, if we were able to get, have little kiddos in daycare, if parents can go to treatment, they can go to mental health, they can focus on an older sibling's more intense issues. So that's, having that is something that could keep cases from going further. And then also not having a childcare, maybe what keeps us from being able to place a child with a relative or a kin someone in the community, because they don't have childcare. So they're like, I would love to have my grandkid, but what am I going to do with this kiddo while I work? So that's the, the trends we're seeing, I guess, related to not having pretty childcare in the community. And then the, the early intervention. All the research shows the earlier you can get in, the better. While we do have our MST and our wraparound, which is amazing, very fortunate to have that. Ran a lot more if we had just as robust of a service at the, at that zero to three, zero to six level. So that's sort of what, what we're seeing in, in child welfare and then ongoing child welfare.
Thanks, Heather. I appreciate that. I don't want to be some, one of those people that just offers one simple solution, you know, at the end of our time together. But I heard something continually, and that is that you're, are your high school students also four days a week? So, so that they're watching kids, it's not safe, they probably haven't taken CPR and first aid. And I, I just wonder about a simple solution around working with your high school students to provide child wraparound childcare for that fifth day. And potentially working with the school district, potentially working with the community college system. So that all of the kids that are in school have wrap care on Friday. And if there is a supervising adult that might be able to help with several, I guess, whatever our licensing requires, right, Jesse, we have to make sure it's in place. But thinking about that as a type of solution, because it, that first aid makes, and CPR makes such a difference with making sure kids are safe and understanding child development. That any of the students that can work on their CDA while they're watching kids in a supervised setting would be an incredible opportunity. Brooke, I see you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that Build a Generation has funds to provide anyone babysitting classes, including CPR and first aid, so. And maybe hit me up.
I wanted to, I just had, I was on the school board when the decision to go to the four day calendar happened. And at the time, the intent was to have, I mean, there was significant money set aside and grant funding to provide, you know, a mix of like tutoring, enrichment activities, you know, the, the, the intent was not to have Friday be a hole in parents' and kids' calendars. And that just got hit by the buzzsaw of COVID. And a lot of that funding went in, you know, schools weren't even in session in person for chunks of that. A lot of that funding got diverted to dealing with better remote teaching for COVID. And I don't, I don't think it ever quite recovered. And I don't think the fourth day programming ever was given a good chance to succeed for what the intent was. So the intent wasn't that everyone was like off. Is that there was, it was essentially, I mean, just to say it bluntly, that like the hope was that we could sneak in extra instructional days. Maybe not in like core ELA and, you know, math subjects, but in other, you know, other things kids needed. And again, I just don't think that ever really happened. So, you know, restarting that discussion with the school district would be great to, you know, if they continue with the four day calendar, how to take an honest run at what the intent was for the fifth day of programming.
That, I think that would be great. And to, just to keep in mind that with the rate we're paying, they can offer a five day for pre-K and pay their teachers. So, you know, I, I would again, you have so much going on, but bringing the partners back to the table and thinking through, okay, this is a, an area that we might be able to address locally, like you're think, doing. These are areas where the government, the state government can come in and support. And then these are some areas where it's might, there might be some regional solutions. So I just wanted to bring that up, because again, when I heard it, I was like, that seems like a resource opportunity there. So.
Sorry.
I was just gonna say, yeah, we did, we were gonna have representatives from the school district and from CMC here today, but it just things fell apart at the last minute. And our, our superintendent, Dr. Massey's at the superintendent meeting conference. And this breaks, and anyway, we didn't get anyone here, but to Stephanie's last point, just real quick, like we there's a great relationship between the county, our partner organizations, the school district and CMC. You know, high school, I know it's not early, but you know, high school kids can graduate their high school diploma and an associate's degree basically for free. Which is great for all of us who probably, you know, but when you're 18, you, you don't particularly think about that. That's a benefit.
I, I just wanted to put in a plug to continue to use the council both as our regional council, but also as the LCO for Lake County. As a resource, you guys have the unique thing that and I live five minutes from, from wherever you are in Lake County. So our other counties can't say that, but we were here to partner and continue to support in all these efforts.
Thank you, Stacy. And I, I mean, I have many more questions, but there's, we could, I can filter those out later. I don't know if anybody else has any closing comments or anything, but Dr. Roy and your team, thank you so much for your time today. It was great getting to meet you. Learn about your new department and the areas for collaboration with, with the county and to help us with our challenges and opportunities.
Yeah, I think just, just having an opportunity to, to voice to people that matter, kind of what we see on the ground here every day and how important it is for us to make sure that we're focusing on families and success of families. And this is a huge critical piece to their success to live here. It's hard to live here anyway. And so if we can provide as much resources as we can to set people up for success, that's the ultimate goal.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So glad the staff could join. That was the benefit of doing this by Zoom. So thanks for understanding. I do plan on getting to Lake County in the spring. And look forward to that. And if you have any questions, comments that you think of after the fact, feel free to email me. Jesse will be the contact for just ensuring that we have follow through and support of your efforts around thinking about housing, thinking about the connection to Dr. Morgan Medlock's Behavioral Health Administration, thinking through how to connect with various divisions and units within our department to support your work. You obviously have some local and regional solutions to think about. And Stacy, being your LCO is another resource. So all of this, all of this is exciting. And I just look forward to future partnership and just learning from you even more. So thank you for our time together.
Yeah, thank you so much. Anybody else have anything before we adjourn today?
I, I think I'll say something really quickly. I'll echo what Stacy was saying and the fact that our coalition is kind of a more focused sense on Lake County itself. And where we're at, being that we're a new coalition is we're really focused on getting as much engagement as possible. And so as great and amazing as you know, Stacy and Kristen are, they have that regional perspective, whereas we're really focusing very much on Leadville and Lake County. So these kinds of meetings and these collaborations are exactly what we're looking for. So as much as anybody can contribute or like to join us, that would be wonderful. Or just to meet me for coffee, because I'm here too.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Roy. Thank you to your team. I hope everybody has a great weekend.
Thanks. You too.
Dr. Roy, we'll see you in about an hour.
Sounds good. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Wait, don't end the meeting. It's the three button.
Save chat.
Save chat.
So, yeah.
That doesn't save automatically as part of the, I guess, we're recording.
I'm not sure.
All right, chat saved.